Along those lines, right? You know, when you have a road that you live on, like I live on Woodbury Road, I know all of my neighbors, right? And we're very tight together. And we see garbage and, you know, we're kind of like, hey, the road's getting kind of messed up. We need to do something about it. And I wonder if maybe we could kind of create a revitalization of like, just that, that homegrown, live on your road. Hey, we live on the same road. What can we do to, um, to get people on our own road to clean? Because, like you guys said, if it's just one space that you're, you're cleaning up, um, then that road is my road. That's the road I drive in every day. And, um, and so that becomes my section of Woodbury. So, um, maybe if there's a way that we can kind of encourage people just in their own road to get like a road mascot, you know, someone who would kind of be like the captain of the ship and kind of rally their group, um, we can get one volunteer per road to, you know, seek them, to bring them to a space to start to recruit people on their road. Because I most likely can get my neighbor to help out because I see them every day, then you would be able to. So, um, that is just a thought. The last I want to say is this, um, I'm so excited to see what the Climate Smart Task Force is doing. Um, the idea of what could be done with this property, along with the town. The town has property that, you know, we talked about, um, there was 11 acres of land that, by gosh, oh, that I, I recommended doing a solar farm to, to cut costs for the town and the village, because that could, 11 acres of land could potentially provide a good amount of solar energy. I think that, you know, we have to, um, move past the way we do things to really think creatively about how to bring down the taxes, bring down the pollution, bring down, um, you know, the building that we see right now, and really try to maintain what we have. Because as said, you know, a lot of the areas that we're seeing that are, uh, you know, experiencing a lot of trash and dumping, um, there's changes that's going on in our communities. So, being able to, to address these issues as a community is going to require us to think a little bit outside the box. So, I'm really hoping that the, the board is, uh, the village board is able to address those areas. And then last one thing, um, is the board looking at, um, grants for, um, water preservation? I know that I kind of messaged Lisa about some grants. It's like a lot of grants that are coming out right now. Um, this would be the time to look at that. Um, they have a lot that's going out to, um, protect water going to the Hudson River. Um, and, and our, a lot of our water streams filter out there. So I would imagine that maybe that would be able to, and I know she spoke about that. Um, and then of course, I have a project I'm going to meet with, um, Lisa on, but it, it should be helpful. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Uh, just so you know, we actually did, the solar farm idea actually came up today.
Yeah.
And it has come up in the past. But we did look into that possibly in Brigadoom, because we do own a parcel of land there, but I don't know how that's working. Eddie, you coming up to speak?
Uh-oh. So I'm not looking to dime anybody out, Eddie Creighton, Hyland Mills, but what seems simple to me doesn't seem to be simple. I'm not throwing, I'm not pointing fingers here. But what I'm saying is, we have, I'm not talking about the hourly worker. We got supervisors going up and down these roads all day. So if you see garbage outside a guy's house, like it's between the red house and there was another house set back, it's cleaned up now. But what I'm getting at is, why can't that supervisor stop, ring the bell, say, hey, you know, blah, 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 and there's a record right there for the court? Right? There you go. So if we're doing this, uh, listen, I know that the town employees are busy. Believe me, I'm the last one to go after any of them. I was a union rep in the city. So, all I'm saying though is, if we utilize what we got, you know, to say, you know, let's stop here and let this individual know, like, you don't see this? I mean, days, weeks, garbage. For example, just other things. And that way, you're making a record of it. You notify, you know, the supervisor or whoever, I don't want to be giving work to anybody, but you know, they can notify them and just say, look, just so you know, the town is going to be notified if it's not cleaned up. This is going to go against you. And we'll be here every day, or every day we see it till it's cleaned up. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Eddie. And what, what Jackie and Eddie made mention of in Brooklyn? Do we do that in Woodside, Queens? No. No. Me and Eddie are from the same part of Queens. You feel my pain? Up the mic, there you go.
Yeah, it's too low. I can't bend. Chris Grausian, Ohio Mills. Um, to start off, I haven't heard so many nays since I visited his stable last time, but besides that, um, a couple of things I wanted to bring up. One, for the water supply, if people have questions about water, we're not, other people are not stealing water. Water supply is based on the ability of you have to pump water out of the ground with the stations you have. And there's specific laws in New York State about how you have to have a certain amount of water supply. You have to have a certain amount of water supply with your largest source out of, out of service. These are set in stone rules from the Department of Health, so it has nothing to do with who is where and what and who's taking water. It's only what's in the village, only what the village capacity is, only what the village's capability is to produce water. Um, years ago, when I first started up on the board, I asked to have a study done of the village's water system, and they did a complete report of what was the capacity. It's been, it's available. Mickey has it. He did a great job working with H2M on it. There's a lot of information in it, and it pointed to the things we have to do that are still going on to this day. And it will still go on because as you responsibly build, you have to responsibly increase your infrastructure along with it at a pace that you can maintain that building and supply that building and make your water supply sustainable for the future. And that's the only way you do it, is to do it in parallel. So what you guys did tonight was the proper thing. I agree with it 100%. Um, the second piece is, thank you, Lisa, for everything you're doing. Thank you, Jackie, for starting Climate Smart. Andrew picked it up with Tara when we were back on the board, and you drove the bus through the door. So, I want to thank you for that. It's been a great thing, and it's been a team effort, and it didn't die. It started, you started it, it kind of petered out because you didn't get the support you needed. And thank God you've gotten the support you need. Yeah. And the last thing, and the last thing I want to bring up is the taxing thing that, um, that was, came up about water. Um, just in case you don't know, I represent water utilities that are in five counties and 75 municipalities throughout the state of New York. And this is a common occurrence where you cross municipal lines, you do not get exempt from taxes once you leave your municipality. All villages and tax each other throughout the state. I've, it's all over the place in Westchester County. So I just wanted to, it's a normal occurrence. So again, you did the right thing. If you want to put your water infrastructure somewhere, put it where, where, in your own village. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, CJ. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Twice. So, really? Yeah, go ahead. All right, fine. Fine. I, I DVR'd all my telenovelas.
It, it's about the property maintenance. Would there, there's a question that I think Martha brought up about camera, a trail camera or anything. There may be questions about putting a camera up, but what about legacy ridge property out that way, or any other thing? Is there anything against putting up signs that say, area monitored by cameras?
That'd be a big fat lie. Hey.
Well, that would be a big fat lie.
You have to say yes or no.
I think it would be something that the village would have to be very delicate on that is not their property, and they don't want to have people think that there is a camera out there, have something occur, come back to the village and say, well, where's your camera? And then you could get into a bigger problem.
But it'd be something that could be looked into. I mean, not actually have the cameras, but have a sign high enough so somebody doesn't, you know, pull them off and do that. But put, put, put out there on open, on open stretches.
Neil, you're always opening up cans of worms.
Homes. Not where you can see people's homes at all, but I know when I see, uh, red light area, you know, can't monitor by camera or something, I may slow down a little bit. If I see a sign that says, area monitored by cameras.
I really wouldn't advise that the board would do something like that unless there was the, unless there was a camera or surveillance occurring in there.
All right. It's just a suggestion maybe you want to consider. The other thing is that the cleanup day started back, oh heck, how many, I don't know how many years ago. Woodbury was a lot.
It was just horse-drawn buggies on Route 32.
Yeah. Well, I, what I can say is, Woodbury was a lot smaller. And on Woodbury Day, we had over 100 people show up down at the school on Smith Clover. It was probably no place to park, and they had, we had, we had 100 and some people go out and clean up Woodbury. There's more people in Woodbury now than there was then. If we can't get off our butts and get out there twice a year and clean up, I can do that. I can't do much because I can't bend that much.
That's okay, Neil. You did your part already.
I can tell you that our children practice safe sex. Because that's, that's, that's what, they don't understand. And the favorite, the favorite cigarette was Marlboro.
Yep.
And that every black thing on the ground wasn't, wasn't a piece of, wasn't a piece of hose.
It's rather miserable. Do you mean to say that they properly dispose of their garbage in a proper waste receptacle?
Yes. But I'm just saying.
God, you know, I miss the boards of Neil Kraus.
We're bigger. There's 100. Get, get 100 people out this time and go out and clean up your neighborhood, clean up, clean up where you are. It won't take that long.
He's, at the end of the day, he's right, though. They used to get 100 people out for cleanup days. Now you're lucky if you get 20. And it really, and I'm not exaggerating, it really is that. All right. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? All right. Going out to the board. Actually, no, department comments. Mickey Phillips, you're good. Yeah, man, a few words. Tara Burek.
Can you show her how to use the microphone? Yes. So I just want to thank this board for doing what we wanted to do five years ago. Um, you just preserved 25.6 acres of open space. And for anyone, for anyone who's been past the property, um, it is exactly, um, what you would want open recreation space to be, uh, or passive recreation space. And when you visit it, it is, it's recessed. So it's in like a valley almost, with mountainous views. And, um, I saw it at a sunset, and it was absolutely beautiful. There's all kinds of wildlife, which actually does constitute passive recreation, is wildlife watching, birds galore. Um, there is a, a black dirt area where they use for organic farming, so there's no pesticides on it. It is absolutely perfect for what many different uses that the community could use it for. And I do not think we would have been able to find a better parcel. Um, I remember the dialogue with Martha on the county's website with Steve Newhouse, and I was like, this is a woman who's on a mission. And then, of course, pairing up with Sue, there was no stopping the trajectory of this. Uh, so thank you, everybody that was involved. This is truly a dream come true for Woodbury and, um, the board. You should be very proud of yourselves for what you just did tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Oh, and Desiree. Desiree, oh my gosh, how could we forget you and your work? Uh, no. There were a lot of inquiries from the grant writer that were involved, that Desiree fielded, and it made sure that this was seamless for everyone. So thank you, because I don't know that it would have been possible without you.
Okay. Before we get to Desiree Podvin, I just want to say, she's not just a pretty face, okay? She, she, we have been doing these little budget meetings for the last week, and they're not little. It is like stress to the umpteenth degree, uh, to the point where Desiree takes up drinking. Of course that, of course that, of course that drinking is just iced tea and Sprite.
Starbucks.
Oh, Starbucks. Oh my God. The Starbucks opened up, they've been there every day since.
Oh, so fine.
Okay? They'll be asking for a raise to pay for their, their $12 cups of coffee.
It's worth it.
Anyway, I just want to thank Desiree because, yes, we, we talked about the grant. She is. She was the conduit. She was drawing in all the information from different sources and just made it happen. So I do, I can't, I thank her from the bottom of my heart. It has been my pleasure since the day she walked in full-time to have her here. It has made, not that it was ever a problem to see Jessica at Village Hall.
Sorry, I didn't know where I were.
But it is a pleasure to have the team that I have working with me, and she is a huge part of that. So I thank you for the budgets, as always, because they are the worst month of anybody's life. Okay? So, thank you, and it's your turn to speak.
I mean, thank you. I have, I have, you know, been here six months now, actually in the office full-time. I, I did do a lot of work in the evenings and weekends previously to that, when I was serving both positions. But, um, yeah, it's been great. And if you hear of anything, you know, a lot of times, a lot of the water grants, sadly, we don't apply, we can't apply for because our median salary, um, per capita income is too high. In Woodbury, we're a very wealthy community. Um, but yeah, I've been, I've taken over the whole grant tracking, and that in itself is almost a full-time job.
That and the banners.
And the banners.
By the way, Maria's gone. That was, how many banners? 68?
66 banners.
66 banners are going to be adorning Route 32.
Yep.
But that was some undertaking.
It was, in a month.
Yep.
One month period, and we got it all done. So, first batch arrived today. There are a couple of people I've called about needing to approve their banner. So if you did buy a banner, and you got the email with the proof, and you were ecstatic about how it looked, you still have to go and approve it. So if you haven't done that yet, Lisa, you're one of them, please go and do that. Otherwise, you're going to get a phone call from me Friday's banner day. So Friday's the day I call about the banners. Um, and, you know, we've gone on and on about all of the wonderful women that work for the village, but I would be remiss, and I would not at all be able to do my job.
Thank you. The man, the man says, the man says nothing the entire meeting, and then just throws these grenades. Kayden has said more.
Yeah.
And he's not hit the Hartman head.
By the way, Mickey makes a mean Irish soda bread, just so you know. Oh my God.
And he got a, he got a mixer.
No, he brought one in. He got a mixer. He got an early tester.
And it tasted great.
But as I was about to say before you, you did that, um, Jessica McLennan, I mean, other than being really my best friend, I can just literally go boo, 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 and she knows exactly what that means. Um, I would, I could not, a lot of us could not do our job in this village without her. She is amazing.
So I really don't have much, but, um, I did want to point out that, speaking of Jessica McLennan, she followed up with happy belated birthday to trustee Fereley and to trustee Fryban, and she made you guys cupcakes.
And she bakes. All right. Jessica, you have anything?
Um, nope.
Nope, okay.
Thank you, buddy.
All right. Deputy Mayor Fereley, what do you got?
Uh, just a couple of announcements, nothing big. This Saturday, the Knights of Columbus is doing their annual St. Patrick's Day Dinner Dance fundraiser. So that's going to be at the gym over at St. Patrick's, and tickets are $50 each, and it's all-inclusive. Um, and they do have some, we have the Irish dance that we have every year, but this year they're going to have some backpipes. So something a little different than normal. So, and that'll start at 7:00 PM, and it'll go till, whenever people want to leave, around 10, 11 o'clock. Okay? Um, I was going to talk about the Repair Cafe, but Lisa kind of covered all that. So we have a blood drive coming up on March 29th. That blood drive, we started it, or the village started it in March of 2020, and it was done for the memory of Michael Hansen. Okay? And Andrew put a nice write-up on the village page about Mike Hansen and everything that he's done. So I just have a couple of bullet points from that that I want to just read out to everybody in case you haven't seen what the mayor put up. So Mike was an NYPD detective. He was a trained nurse, and he was in the ESU division. He was also a parishioner at St. Patrick's Church. He was a Eucharistic minister. He was also a member of the Knights of Columbus. And when he passed, I was the grand knight at the time, and we made him an honorary grand knight, um, for his wake. So it was a very nice little ceremony that we did for him. Okay? So the first year, that memory was just for Mike. Then COVID hit. And unfortunately, we started losing some, some residents. So in 2021, it was decided that we would do in memory of Mike Hansen in honor of somebody, or in 2021, sorry. So in, in 2021, it was Tony Maggio that it was honored of. 2022 was Lenny Cologne. 23, it was James Ward. Last year was Andrew Zumas, and this year, John O'Friel. So that blood drive has kind of taken on a little bit of life of its own, and it's become kind of a thing within the village. And I know the mayor and I go back and forth with this, uh, this time of the year. But in the five years that that blood drive has been hosted, we've collected 311 pints of blood. So if you're available, please come out, March 29th, right here at Village Hall, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and donate a pint of blood. Okay? I wish I was able to do it, but I can no longer do it, unfortunately, but that's a separate issue. And then, um, Maria, I want to save the date, oh, she laughed. The Memorial Day Parade is going to be on Sunday, March 25th, and we're going to step off on Bond Street at noon, 12:00 noon. So just to save the date on that one. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Trustee Suriello, you're next.
Um, just a couple of things. With regards to the open space, um, when Vic and I were campaigning last year, it was the hottest topic. When we went door to door, people were talking about preserve and protect. And I think I can speak for Vic that that is our number one priority here. And this open space, it went through various people. It was a team effort, and we are proud to be part of that.
For me, it was an open.
Right. Uh, second, Martha, you make some very interesting comments, and I can't say enough that I 100% agree with you. And just to let you know, I, I hear what you're saying, and I have, because I agree with you. It is a conflict of interest to be sitting on those committees as an elected official. And I just want you to know that I only attended one meeting, but I, you've kind of inspired me and kind of like, let me see that that is a conflict of interest. And I'm not going to put myself in that position ever. So I have resigned from that committee, and this is my priority here. At another time, I would have no issue volunteering my service there. But I want to thank you for putting that in perspective, because when I heard you speak, I listened to the town board meeting, and I heard it, it delightful just kind of went off in my head. And I said, I, I don't feel that I should be sitting here. Um, and I honestly would encourage anyone else sitting on those committees that are elected officials, they should resign as well. It will preserve the integrity of the elections in Woodbury. Period. Okay? On a lighter note, we have a wellness fair, Wellness and Volunteer Fair, coming up at the high school on April 24th. And we have both Woodbury Community Ambulance and Woodbury Fire Department going in hopes to recruit some future volunteers. Um, and a final note, we have, um, the High School Musical, that will be the last musical for the season. Um, will be at the high school on Thursday, the 27th, and Friday, the 28th at 7:00 PM. And on the 29th at 2:00 PM, they are doing the Secret Garden. Uh, come see the kids, my kid, his kid. And, um, they're really excited to perform for the community. Um, it's, these kids are so driven and so passionate about what they do. Um, they can't wait to share it with everybody. So thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
Thank you, trustee Suriello. Trustee Fabro.
I'll kind of continue on that note, um, with the school. So I was very happy to be part of that political panel, um, last two weeks ago now with this, with the MW Sustainability Warriors. And similar to what everybody was talking about before, with the Climate Smart Group and Jackie helping start that group and Lisa carrying it on, I'm looking forward to what we're going to do in the coming year, and what we're going to be working on with this, um, this recent, uh, now approved land acquisition purchase and the native plants and things we can plant there, as well as the trash cleanups. And I'm looking forward to seeing, hopefully, more than a few faces at our next cleanup. Um, and then for announcements, I have, let's see here. Well, you guys covered actually all the announcements. You, you covered, yeah, the Repair Cafe and Orber Day and all that, and the trash cleanup. So, um, with that, a happy early St. Patrick's Day, and a happy pyram to those in the Jewish community and those who celebrate. And thank you.
Thank you, trustee Fabro. Trustee Fryban.
Thank you. Uh, there's just a couple of items I'd like to briefly bring up to the board. Uh, we received correspondence from residents concerning the Cromwell Lake, uh, the use of pesticides to clear some of the, um, aquatic, um, problems that are occurring there, or apparently are occurring. The, when we did that, I had to ask that we not do this until, that we not authorize the funding for this until it's been cleared, uh, in particular, the secret, because as far as I can see, the village has not done the secret on this, uh, funding for this action. Um, I think this needs to be done, and we need to respond to residents who are concerned about the potential downstream effects of using this pesticide. Uh, additionally, I'd like to get a commitment from the village, from the mayor, to send a letter to the Orange County Commissioner of Transportation. Uh, we had, in the, in the past three weeks, uh, while I've been out running, on two occasions, I've had to help semis back out, uh, because they somehow got, came down Angola Road and then ended up being blocked at any of the three ways through 32, which really is a hazardous situation. And there really should be a sign posted, uh, warning trucks about low clearances ahead at the Angola Troutbook Road intersection, so we don't have people coming down, uh, Smith Clover Road and ending up crosswords, trying, particularly the one going across Pine Hill Road is just impossible to back a truck out of there. And it's, it's happened now twice in two weeks, and I just happened, and that was only because I was running by that I noticed it. So I think it happens more often than not. Thank, and, uh, again, I also wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day, and to remember that tomorrow is Pi Day. It's 3.14169. Thank you. I said tomorrow. Tomorrow is, tomorrow is.
Where's my cupcakes?
Yeah.
Where are my cupcakes?
I'll be back tomorrow.
Okay, bye tomorrow. Lemon Moray.
All right. My turn. Um, I want to touch on what Martha Lopez had said at the town board meeting, and even said here tonight. And I really want to touch on the nastiness that has already begun here in Woodbury with this campaign. Um, Martha was in front of the conservative committee like me, okay? Uh, our nominations were basically sabotaged at the, at that meeting. The Republican Committee meeting, I survived, okay, thanks to the older members of the Republican Committee, and I am thankful, because I became the first Republican endorsed for mayor without having to go through a primary, even though I have a primary opponent. Okay? Um, Martha wasn't so lucky, and it went back and forth. And then there was, of course, the call to Ruben Estrada at the Latino Coalition, okay, about axing her endorsement. This, coupled with some of the Facebook posts and the mailers that have been sent out about me. Now, I'm a big boy. I don't mind. All right? I kind of think it's comical at times. Uh, but I didn't like that they included Rachel Bruce in there, and I kind of hoped that the Democrats on the board would have said something. Because to include her in a flyer, and the fact that I endorsed her, and now I'm a I endorsed her, and now I'm a rhino, was ridiculous. This woman's face is posted all over the place in mailers that went around, okay? I endorsed her because she's a decent human being, okay? She is part of the village of Woodbury family, is part of my climate, Land Preservation Committee, she's on my zoning board, and quite honestly, the woman is part of our Woodbury Community Association, not Community Association, Ambulance Corps, okay? She goes out there, she does shifts. The woman dedicates her time, this young lady. So to have her plastered all over there was, was disgraceful, okay? It was just disgraceful. This is early, this is February, March, and we're doing election BS now, and it's just ridiculous. The amount of crap that has been made up about me already, okay, because Trustee Frybend brought up, these emails from residents, and I sent it to Joey G. N. Zero, the one post about the, "I refuse the tiller," or whatever machine you want to call it, for the Cromwell Lake, that's the furthest thing from the truth. So obviously, somebody's working with somebody here, okay? This is just not coincidence, because I don't believe in coincidence, okay? Now, I know a lot of you said you need to fight back, you need to, you need to get down and dirty. No, I don't, okay? Nobody in this community wants to be subjected to a dirty campaign, and that is apparently the route they're going to take, okay? I am not taking that route. I am telling people, if they're going to go low, we're going to go high. And yes, I just quoted a Democrat, okay? So if you want to put that on your palm card and say that, "Oh, look at this rhino," that's fine, okay? Because there are bigger problems coming to Woodbury, okay? Part of our meeting with Newhouse, it was brought up Ace Farms, and that KJ is going to be making a very big push for Ace Farms. So this is something that we need to address as a community, as a team. It is going to take all of us to deal with this, whether we go to the mattresses with KJ, okay, fight tooth and nail, or we look to make an agreement with them. I don't know, but it's going to be a decision we all make, okay? It's not going to be something that I do alone, it'll be done with everybody's input. So the last thing I need to be dealing with is lies spread about me, because honestly, like I said, I get a kick out of it, because when somebody meets me and I handle a problem for them, and, but then they hear from somebody else what a piece of garbage I am, it works in reverse, right? Because then they go, "Wait a minute, I met that guy. He's not so bad, he's working on this, this, and this." And literally, with the Republican Committee, that's what I told them. I said, "Tell me something I am not working on." Okay, because really, from A to Z, Am Door Park to Zombie Poles, I am working on, okay? There's not something I am not doing, okay? So I implore you, you want to engage, that's fine, because there are many things that you could poke holes in, okay? I will not be going that route, okay? I will stick to what got me here in the first place, what I've done as mayor, and what I will continue to do as mayor. So I want to thank everybody for their support, those that reached out to me, Ray Hernandez doing a mental health check for me, Martha Lopez in the back, you are a rock star, I don't give a crap what anybody says about you, you are awesome. So, anyway. Right, Kayden, am I great? He's easy, wait, I got money in my pocket for you. Okay. I, I was, I was getting there. So you got anything to add, buddy? Okay, go ahead. Yeah, it's on, go ahead, take your time. My telenovelas will be there when they get on.
Woodbury is, don't feel bad about the garbage, because Monroe is much, much dirtier than Woodbury. I'm, I'm in Monroe every day, and I just see garbage everywhere.
I got to ask, did you create him in a lab? Yeah, maybe.
Probably got a call from Tony Cardone tomorrow.
What else, you got anything else?
Nope.
Alright, good job. Bring him every meeting. Alright, Jim.